Yeah.
Okay. Floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Dory Brooks. This is Christian Witzit. We are the principal architects leading the design team, working with your owner's project manager, Skanska, on the feasibility study and schematic design of a core building project for East Long Meadow High School, where the licensed design professionals that are of record for the project, it should be completed. We're here tonight to present an update on the project. First, I'd like to provide some background for those watching at home who are probably less informed than you are about the project thus far, to let you know how this project came about. Then we'll present an overview of the school building committee's conclusions and recommendations, and then we'll review the cost implications and local approval process. Please feel free to interrupt at any time if you have any questions as we go along, or if you prefer to hold, we can talk about any questions you have at the end. As you all know, our work to date has been conducted under a feasibility study contract paid for by the town and the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The MSBA offers competitive grants to school districts to support capital projects. This project is funded under the Core Program, meant to help districts with major renovation, addition, and new construction projects. Application to the Core Program is competitive. Applications are ranked according basically to how bad their situation is. The district has a need and is looking to have that need addressed, and there are a mix of factors that the MSBA uses in determining projects and their eligibility for the Core Program, including the age of the building, the amount of space per student, the current and projected enrollment, the condition of the major systems of the school, the general environment of the building, and the appropriateness of the building to the school's educational mission. The MSBA's financial contribution to the project comes from money raised from sales tax that we all contribute to. One penny of our 6.25% sales tax goes to MSBA grants. East Long Meadow School District applied to the MSBA for admission to the Core Program over seven years ago. It was worthy of admission right away, but only eight to 10 school projects are selected during the Core Program. And while this project was worthy of admission, it took seven years for the project to be selected into the Core Program. The feasibility study and schematic design phase are two phases of what is now a nine-phase process, couldn't even fit all the phases on the slide, that begins with eligibility and ends after the project is complete and the building is commissioned to be sure its systems are working as designed. Continuing on from this point depends on the district and MSBA coming to agreement on the scope and budget of the project and on the locality demonstrating ability and willingness to pay its share of the cost. Once the schematic design phase is complete, the next steps for the project involve the town council agreeing to bond for the cost and the community voting for a specific debt exclusion to allow borrowing beyond the Prop 2.5 borrowing limit. The current project schedule has a town council addressing the bond measure and the ballot language on September 19th, and the town vote taking place November 7th. This is followed by a year of detailed design and 33 months of construction. The school building committee's role in the project has been to explore alternative solutions and determine the appropriate project's scope and budget, working with our team and estimators. In reviewing, change the line, in reviewing the existing conditions of the site at the beginning of the project, the committee and design team highlighted considerable advantages and challenges of the current site conditions and worked with the design team to develop options to address them. We also heard consistently throughout the project at numerous public hearings that this community has strong feelings about the site and the uses of the site for non-school recreational and community events. It's been a consistent goal of the project from the beginning to be sure that the school and site are complementary and the larger community can access both the building and the recreational amenities of the site. In the assessment of the existing building, engineers reviewed systems thoroughly. I'd recommend that anyone with questions about our assessment go to the project page that is on the district's website and review the preliminary design program report, which includes evaluations of each building system. Of greatest concern in that evaluation are the deteriorating and inadequate conditions of the existing electrical system from transformer to device, the distribution and control systems for heating and ventilation, and the condition of the roof, all of which are insignificant concern at this point. On architecture, core wall finishes are reasonably solid, but floors and ceilings throughout the building are in very poor condition. Windows and doors are also in very poor condition and in need of immediate replacement. Addressing this series of overlapping system replacement needs in a single project or series of projects in a building of this age, size, and assessed value triggers obligations to meet additional code requirements. As a reminder, the building was designed prior to Massachusetts even having a building code, and we're now on our 10th building code. So we're 10 generations back on this project. So anything that's done to the building that triggers a requirement to meet current building code requirements is going to face additional costs, and that's part of the problem of a code upgrade or major renovation of the project. The school, for example, does not have sprinklers and would be required to provide sprinklers if any major alteration or renovation were to take place. There are unusual challenges to any major renovation of a building of this period and design. To accommodate sprinklers and appropriately sized ductwork and revised heating and cooling systems, the ceilings of this school would have to be lowered. In this plan, what you see is what is already a concern, that spaces in the school, some are as great as 20% below MSBA size expectations, and some are as small as 5% below. That matters because MSBA's contributions to projects is tied to the ability of those spaces to meet MSBA's size guidelines. So that's part of why a major code upgrade becomes ineligible. There are several reasons, but that's one reason why it's largely ineligible for MSBA reimbursement. So again, one of the reasons why the new construction option ended up being the determined option.
Ask you a quick question.
Yeah.
The size requirements, is that based on how many pupils are in the classroom?
The overall school enrollment triggers a whole set of expectations as to number of classrooms and size of classrooms, but generally speaking, classrooms are required to be between 825 and 950 square feet. Below 825 is ineligible for reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So from an educational standpoint, this problem of having to modify the building to meet current needs is significant because it changes the shape of the classroom that students are learning in. So these classrooms that are already undersized relative to current guidelines become even smaller when you add additional ductwork in the ceilings or add additional wall thickness to add insulation to the outside wall. So that's one of the things that we viewed here as a challenge. We're certainly not opposed to renovations as an idea, but the committee in looking at this saw that they were compromising the quality of the teaching space, and that was one of the most significant reasons why this option was really rejected by the committee. So additionally, the goal of the project is always to meet the current educational plan, and in the same way that the working world and manufacturing world and automobiles and television have changed over the last 60 years, so has education. The district wrote an educational plan for the future of East Long Meadow High School as a part of this project, and the proposed new construction is designed around meeting that educational plan, whereas the existing school is designed around the educational plan of the mid-1950s and 1960s. When the committee compared the option of a base repair, can you change the lines for me? Compared the options of the cost of a code upgrade to a major ad renovation or a new construction project, the relative cost, given the advantages of new construction, tilted the committee's preference towards a new construction option. When reviewing these things, what we observed with the school committee is that they were not looking just at total project cost, but also at the end result, the longevity of the design, the ability of the school to serve community needs as well as school needs in the future and now, and the impact of construction project would have on learners. That last topic I just want to mention because it's important, because both the code repair and ad rental options were significantly more impacting of the school's operations. They would have required displacing students in the modulars, potentially stretching the project time out. So while we costed these out as if they were sort of immediate projects, in reality, a code upgrade project typically ends up becoming a series of projects because you have to try and work around the school schedule, and that's actually very, very difficult to do. So it really does impact operations. After review of the options over several months, the school building committee and the majority of the community members who were present and attended public meetings that we held to review the process expressed the strongest preference for a new construction option. In March, the school building committee voted to forward that new construction option forward into the schematic design that became the cost basis and will become the cost basis for the scope and budget agreement between the community and the MSBA. So I'll take it over Christian to talk through some of the fun parts.
Yeah, so to streamline the process, Dory and I are here tonight. Skanska is the owner's project manager, and so they know more about the cost side of things than we do, but we're all pretty up to date on this project. So these are the cost slides that we've presented at the, we've had numerous public meetings, and the last one that we had at the high school, we were able to present these numbers. These are based off of the preferred schematic report, so that was an earlier submission to the MSBA, where the committee decided, yes, we want to go with all new construction. So we got rough numbers based off of that square footage, based off of how the market is looking and comparable schools in the state. Right now, we're at the very tail end of schematic design, and that's when we're going to have the exact number that the voters are going to vote on in November. So we have another public meeting in September and another one in October, and at those two presentations, we'll be able to update this slide with a lot more detail. Another thing that I want to mention here is, we know from the very beginning, it was the town's hope that the pool would be included with the school project. The MSBA would not allow the pool to be considered part of the school project because it's a school funding-only, you know, grant organization. And so as they see it, you know, they want to try and spread that money as equally across the state as possible. So you'll see this over and over again, but they really only contribute towards eligible costs, and they use that term quite often. And it's their way of making sure that they try and, you know, distribute those funds as equitably as possible. So the pool project is a separate project. We have a separate pool building committee, and that pool building committee is hoping that the pool project will be approved at the same timeline as a school project. Both have elected to go with a construction manager at risk for the construction portion. So that means that the building committee will be able to interview several construction managers, pick the one that they want, and we're hoping that we'll be able to get the same construction manager for both of those projects that go forward at the same time. But so this, the pool costs were even more unknown than the school costs at this point. So this was taken from, basically, costs from the West Springfield Pool Project, which SMMA did, the architectural team that we're partnering with on this project, and we brought it up to today's dollars and gotten an approximate project costs for that pool. We then brought those costs and started looking at what type of an impact that would have on taxpayers here in East Long Meadow. Again, sorry that I skipped a very important part on the school project. We have, again, an approximate MSBA reimbursement of between 55 and 57 million. So as Dory mentioned, when we're in schematic design and with that project's scope and budget agreement, that number gets finalized to a very specific dollar amount. But with these early numbers, we were able to go through the MSBA spreadsheet and figure out that it was roughly 55 to 57 million that would be coming from the state, helping the town with the cost of this project. So, given that amount, we looked at a combined local share of about 135 million, that ballpark, with an impact on an average single-family home, which has a value in East Long Meadow of about $340,000. That impact would be about $1,200 a year. I'm going to keep going. We can come back to this if there's more questions on it. It's a lot of numbers to go through quickly, but we do have a lot to cover tonight. Any questions quickly before I go on?
What'd you base that on? 20-year bond or 30-year bond?
30-year bond. And I should mention that we've been working with Kim Collins, and she did mention that she and Hilltop, who she's working with on the bonding itself, will be able to attend a meeting in September to discuss the structure of that bond. But yeah, it is a 30-year loan that those numbers came from.
So we wanted to just give you a preview. The schematic design phase requires that we develop enough information in the design to be able to cost out, not relative to other projects, but relative to the materials that would be required for this project. So that's the process we're in currently, is we have developed these floor plans and renderings and elevations and placed materials to it, and had all of those sizes accurately estimated. And that's the, we're looking at those numbers now. We do feel that the project numbers are generally going to hold. So the design calls for a two-story structure. Overall square footage is not that different than the original school. Let's see if it's down here. It's, the gymnasium portion of the school, which is not shown in the image, but is on the, if you go back to actually one shot there. So the gymnasium is the element to the left on the north elevation. That's a 16,000 square foot gym. The total school is 192,000 plus square feet. It's a two-story building. The academic wing is to the back. The front would still present a kind of a mix of masonry and be completely constructed behind the existing school. We'll go through the site plan in a second. So the plan calls for, obviously, a new gymnasium that's larger than the current gymnasium, new additional PE spaces, including a weight room, locker rooms, a new auditorium that's a multipurpose focused auditorium. We've organized it so that the auditorium and chorus and band and art classes create an arts wing up towards the front of the school. You go pass through that to the academic wing. So we try and create a little bit of separation from the more public spaces to the academic spaces to the rear. The design calls for 31 classrooms, four vocational spaces. It's an engineering lab, culinary arts, video production, early childhood education, and graphic design. Those spaces are different than the standard classrooms. Each set of, bank of classrooms is organized kind of as its own community, but students would be moving back and forth. There's a central commons that everyone participates in. That's also a dining hall that opens towards the south. So we try and maximize daylighting. It's a high-performance school, designed with high insulation levels, high roof insulation. It's designed for the addition of photovoltaic panels, much better designed in general in terms of electrical systems serving the educational needs of students today. Go to the next slide. This gives you a sense of the site plan. You can see, hatched in red lightly, is the footprint of the existing school. So the intent here is to design, is to build the new school behind the existing school so that operations can continue in the existing school and students aren't impacted. It does then require a second phase of work to redo the parking and circulation. Our goals there have been to create a safer parking and circulation plan and to eliminate the connection to Norden, but provide a turnaround back there for emergency vehicle access for the recreational fields and ADA parking. The site includes both the six-lane pool footprint, as well as new varsity baseball and softball fields, new JV baseball and softball. As some of you know, softball actually was displaced and hasn't been on site, so that's a significant goal. Five practice fields, the new press box and concessions building, relocating tennis and then striping it also for pickleball, and then providing much better amenities around the school itself to support outdoor education. So, a whole part of this conversation that's important to bring publicly is what happens in Plan B condition? What happens if the vote fails? So we just wanted to summarize some of the key concerns, and this is what occurs in all these projects. This is always a very difficult conversation. So this is $120 million is the estimated cost of bringing the building up to current code requirements. So to do those renovations and then face the triggers for things like sprinklers and all the, and energy conservation requirements, to do all of that work is $120 million worth of work. Failed vote jeopardizes the MSBA Core Program grant, which is worth $55 million. So if the project doesn't proceed, that $120 million code upgrade is on the community on its own. It could result in a series of disruptive separate capital projects stretched out over years, and obviously, cost of construction continues to go up. And likely, those projects are funded by East Long Meadow taxpayers without the MSBA's participation. The cost of these repairs and renovations will continue to rise, and you know, we have shown and will show over time images that show how this escalation is impacting school construction around the state. Meanwhile, if the project doesn't pass, no improvements to the educational facility and no improvements to the community's use of the site or the building. And generally, what's always a concern is how does this impact the reputation of the school long-term? How does it affect families that are looking to educate their kids here in East Long Meadow? So going on.
Yeah, so just quickly, the next steps as we approach kind of the end of schematic design here. So we have two school billing committee meetings scheduled, one for August 10th and one for August 24th. That's to approve the schematic design and the budget, again, that we're getting from our cost estimators as we speak. In September, the pool billing committee is hoping to do a similar exercise approving the pool building schematic design and the budget for that project. Also in September, the town accountant establishes a tax impact assessment, reviews the structure of the bonds, and then again, as we have in our schedule right now, is the town council voting to approve the bonding and setting the date for the debt exclusion and improving the language on the ballots on September 19th?
So I'm sorry, so is this, this is going to be separate from our September 12th meeting? Or?
So is the September 19th the latest date for the vote, or is that the date that?
That was notified, we were notified that that would be the latest date for the language on the ballot, because that had to be done prior to the, November 7th is the date that was selected for the town vote, and you have to back that up a certain amount based on town bylaws to determine the ballot language.
Just my question is, will we have like a separate meeting a week after our regularly scheduled meeting, just on this?
Good.
It's a possibility.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't know. I didn't know.
It's a definite maybe.
I think, I don't know. I think that when this date was set in our schedules, it was thought that that was when the town council was meeting. So I think if it happened a week earlier, it would be your prerogative, your choice.
It may also be that our September normal meeting, we have Kim come in to discuss all the possibilities, gives us a week to consider what we like, what we don't like, and then vote on it.
On October 25th is the MSBA board meeting. That's a bit of a formality, so we'll really be figuring out the project's scope and budget with them before then. And so that will happen probably as well in late September, and then November 7th is when we have the town vote scheduled. So there's a question on what exactly they're, all will be voting on. This is the text directly from the MSBA, and they provide this to all of the towns as kind of their standard language. It's expected that your town legal counsel will amend it, fill it in. Usually, there are not too many edits to it, but there can be, and then it has to go back to the MSBA for their approval before they vote it on by their, by their board. So this is both the article and the motion that the town council would, would be looking at. Again, town council will have to confirm, but typically, it's a two-thirds majority needed to pass this at the, at the town council, or if it's a town meeting, at the town meeting level. Here at East Long Meadow, of course, for the town council. It's long and wordy. I just wanted to pull out three specific things that I'm sure you'll know it as you read through it, but you know, the language in here is stock MSBA language, but they most primarily want you to understand that the MSBA's grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, and that any costs incurred in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. So at the public meetings, we've had a lot of questions about that. What happens if the costs go up? And there are a number of contingencies that we keep in the cost estimate to make sure that that does not happen. When we saw the unprecedented, you know, construction cost spike over the last year, some towns did have to go back to their voters to ask for additional funding, but that is, you know, very unusual and not the norm in these MSBA projects.
So by our September vote, are we going to have the two numbers from the MSBA, the maximum percentage and/or the maximum grant amount?
Exactly. So the percentage right now that the town, so again, that's calculated at the state level. So the current percent is 56.48 is the reimbursement percentage that East Long Meadow qualifies for. There are additional incentive points that the MSBA adds on to that. So we're looking at a lead silver building that will be super energy efficient. So we're hoping that we can get, before you get two percentage more for that, we think we can possibly get even more than 2%. You get a certain percentage for, the state evaluates how well you're taking care of your existing schools and gives you another percentage point, percentage and a half, if you have good maintenance procedures. So that's pretty typical. So it will go up slightly from there, but yeah, right now it's 56.48, and that will be set in stone with the MSBA before, before the vote happens. And then, so that's the box number two there. And then on the third box, to appropriate the amount of, and that's going to be the full project costs, so somewhere in the ballpark of 175 to 180 million dollars for the project costs of the, of the proposed project. On November 7th, the voting is much simpler. The ballot language is quite brief. It's really the voters allowing the town to, as Dory mentioned, have a debt exclusion for this project, specific to this project, to override the proposition 2.5. Any questions on those?
So we're going to have multiple articles to vote on. One would be the pool, and then hopefully we'll have the numbers. And is that a non-binding question based on whether or not the school passes?
That's going to be up for the town to decide. As we've talked about it from the school billing committee's perspective and from the pool building committee's perspective, yes, the pool would be contingent on the school passing, but the school passing would not be contingent on the pool passing.
If the ballot votes are only to exempt from Prop 2.5, so the council still vote on those projects?
Yes.
Or not vote.
I didn't.
Yeah.
We have a small budget. Oh, excuse me?
Yes.
So typically, on a ballot question, you have a summary, a yes vote means so-and-so, a no vote means, will that language be crafted also? Is that up to our town attorney?
That's a great question. Thinking on our recent projects, I have not seen that language on the ballot, but certainly you could propose it and see, see what the MSBA thinks.
What you will see is where it says, insert description of the project, there will be greater detail of the size, location, scale of the project. There's a little bit more than, because it would be very hard to understand here. But, and as Christian mentioned, it is important that that language be developed and then shared with the MSBA. So their attorney can look at it and verify. So that's a double check. So that's something that can be raised and discussed.
So just as Dory mentioned on kind of what happens if the town does not approve the local funding, in the small print there at the top, I mean, there is, if the vote is a no vote, there are 10 business days. We have to kind of notify the MSBA and come up with a plan. And so if it's a very close vote, sometimes, you know, you can recommend that you'll vote again in a few weeks, but typically, the failed result requires the town to submit or the district to submit a new statement of interest. Requires the, the town to submit or the district to submit a new statement of interest. Which as Dory mentioned, was about eight years ago to start this whole process. And kind of just get back in line for the, for the MSBA.
So, so what is, maybe if you know off the top of your head, the frequency of. Cities and towns that do end up rejecting. Projects that happen frequently? Do these close vote, have, have these second votes happened frequently?
We were involved with a project in Clark'sburg that was a very small town trying to afford a new school. It did not pass the first vote very narrowly. So we wrote a, a plan to the MSBA that was approved. I think we had another vote two weeks later and that unfortunately also. Was a negative and that project did not move forward.
So I guess this would impact other potential hypothetical projects of other, of our other, of, excuse me, of our other schools. Because like, you know, I, I, I know a colleague of mine mentioned recently, I know that they live in Newton. They rejected, I believe, an elementary school. I think it was a year or two ago. But I'm just wondering if it would just kind of poison the well of the entire community because, you know, we have not just one school building, but multiple. We could have this potential situation come up from our building in the future.
You mean with the MSBA? I think they look at every project independently. And this is obviously the largest scale project you would have because it's the largest building you would have and they, they, you know, MSBA is invested in, in seeing every district succeed. But they definitely, knowing how much money goes into this process and how rigorous it is and how much time, I mean, there's been, you know. Countless meetings to publicly deliberate this project. The committee has been, done an excellent job of participating in it. They don't want communities to pretend that it's going to magically change. You know, if the sentiment is, is strongly opposed to a project and think that they can get in line again. They, they were unusually lenient with Holyoke because Holyoke was in receivership and they did the same with Lynn. They, they, they gave a second try. Typically you just find that a second vote seldom makes a difference, but. Some communities may find a way to bond for it without a public vote. That has happened on projects and made a difference. The MSBA just doesn't want to see the resources wasted, but they also aren't going to not try, not, not provide these opportunities. So they would look at a new SOI very differently. A new SOI on the high school is likely to, to have this real challenge getting, going forward. Until there's a substantive change and, you know, that would demonstrate why the vote would be different, I think.
Didn't Holyoke, they voted down the school and then they were able to get into the accelerated repair program.
Yeah. No, the, so the Holyoke voted down a two-middle school project. So they asked for two at once and that was an exceptional situation that the MSBA even granted that idea. And they, they voted that down. MSBA did provide access to accelerated repair projects, but those were for other existing schools, not for the schools that were in question. So that was to help them improve some of their elementary schools. The MSBA then. Because they were in receivership and they desperately needed those schools. Allowed them to move forward on one school without requiring a vote of the two middle schools. And they recently, recently restarted that process around a model school proposal for one school only. So they're still short of middle school and the only reason they agreed to that is because the town had to, the city had to commit to being able to bond for it without going back to a vote.
You answered.
So I had the pleasure of speaking to State Senator Olivera today and he did let me know that the accelerated repair. They're hoping to get that started up again, that they have put money into it, which is.
Which is great.
Great. You know, not said we're looking at a new school, but I'm just saying in general. Because we still have other schools and.
They have other.
Sure, they still need repairs. So.
And for people who might question why this project, one thing that's not understood accelerated repair, you get that full reimbursement amount. Because there's a lot fewer exceptions to the reimbursement rate. And also an accelerated repair is for projects where it's a single system, like a roof or a boiler. The reason this project doesn't qualify for that is because you have so many overlapping systems that are, that are in crisis really. So that, that's why a project like this is always kind of heading towards the core project.
Marilyn, you had a question?
No, you answer your, you gave the question.
We're thinking alike.
We are.
I just wanted to very quickly cover kind of construction costs over time because I know the numbers are, are mind boggling and, and we've certainly been cognizant of that. And the school billing. Has also been cognizant of that. And we've been. Doing our best to walk the fine line of delivering a project that East Long Meadow can be proud of for at least fifty years, if not more. Meeting the educational, educational needs of the district while also keeping those construction costs in mind. So. A lot of people have compared the project to the Long Meadow High School. And boy, they, you know, did that for much less money, but as you can see from the orange line here, so the orange line is showing construction costs over time. We're over on the far right side with East Long Meadow current project costs. And you can see it's continuing to go up. I think the ones on the far right are Neshoba Regional and, and another one up near Salem. And so this is data, it's from the MSBA's on website. They do a very good job of tracking all of these projects. And then unfortunately, what you can see down there on the green line is the MSBA construction funding limit. So earlier I said they will provide, what was it, fifty-six or fifty-eight percent of your eligible costs? Well, so they consider eligible costs, all those construction costs up to that green line. And then anything above that green line is ineligible. So at the public meetings, it causes quite a bit of confusion, but. While your eligible reimbursement rate is fifty-six percent, that's why we're seeing a real reimbursement rate of closer to thirty, thirty-three percent, right? And so part of that is that, that difference between the green line and the orange line. Part of that is they put caps on site funding. They put caps on some of the hazardous materials work. All of these caps again are, are designed so that, you know, they're not punishing schools that have already. Done hazardous materials work on their own before they got into the MSBA program. So they're trying to look at it in a very egalitarian way. But it does create that confusion between the fifty-six percent and what you're actually getting as, as a town, which is closer to, to fifty-three percent.
West Springfield, Worcester. Although, okay, Amherst is an elementary school.
Yes.
Did those guys get pools in their buildings?
They did not. West Springfield. Did at that point, and I'm under the understanding that the pool.
Separate.
Was a separate. It was, it was a little bit more confusing that it was kind of part of the project, but it wasn't, in, in alternate. And MSB did not participate in the cost of that. But they have since kind of really made that a clear demarcation line that they must be different projects.
Which statistically drives the cost up considerably more with a separate building than if it were included within the, the regular building, correct?
Yeah, I think there will probably be some, you know, some of the soft costs, some of the project costs are higher. It's a little bit more expensive because we're having to bring in utilities independently to those two separate buildings. But in terms of the construction type and how that's all sequenced, we really hope that that can be as seamless as possible. So the, the pool. Will be an independent structural system, which sometimes we do in buildings that are too large anyway. So it'll have a seismic joint between it and the high school. But really the, the construction should be able to, to happen at the same time. And we've really tried to orchestrate it on the site so that it works well. With the new school as well as that existing school being a.
I would say one of the advantages of it, because I, you're, you're right that it's, it's frustrating, you know, it would be nice to sort of just incorporate it. We've done our best to really. Tie the plan so closely together that it will feel part of the project. But also the advantage of that separate vestibule dividing the two. Means that you will probably have the ability to run a larger window of community hours access to the pool. Because the pool is secured from the school. So students will go through a vestibule into the pool, but the community could then use the pool. And we've, we've thought about how the community could access the pool without interrupting the school.
MSBA allowed construction costs. Am I looking at it right? It's just over four hundred or?
Or are you?
It is.
Per square foot.
It's three ninety.
Right now the construction cost outright is like seven hundred and sixty, but the MSBA only allows a percentage up to.
They only reimburse up to a percentage of an allowable cost per square foot. Yeah. Which roughly aligns often with sort of the direct cost, but not all the overhead costs. So they're, they're, they're trying to. Control how much they have and how they're distributing it by following slowly. Three ninety-three per square.
Such a huge difference from what you can actually build at.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, they're politically always, always talking with the legislature to get access to more resources and that number goes up. You can see those jumps. And you can see the last jump was quite a significant one because that period of inflation. It's only significant relative to where it was, not quite as high as we obviously needed to go and it didn't change the slope.
So just to conclude, wanted to again, kind of end on the, the schedule. So if the vote is positive on, on November seventh. We would proceed pretty much directly into detailed design. That's when we go through design development and then construction documents. We would go through the process of hiring that construction manager at risk during that process. So then they're able to comment on the drawings as they're developed. Provide input to the design team. It's a really helpful team approach to, to the project. We would have a series of cost estimates during that process. So one at the end of design development. One at sixty percent of construction documents and another at ninety percent of construction documents. And those three customer estimates are specifically made to check in with that price that we're getting now. To make sure that the project is tracking with the, the cap that was set at the end of schematic design. And then construction would start again with the construction manager. We're able to try and get students into the building in August of twenty twenty-six. While they would then, once the students are in the new building, then they would demolish the existing building. And finish up that site work. So the project would go longer than that. But again, trying to get students into the new building as, as soon as we can. So that's. Why the, the completion date is May of twenty twenty-seven, but the move-in date is August of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, the workmanship guarantee is there on a new construction?
What workmanship guarantee? So.
A one-year guarantee like a residential house with a builder? Is it ten years? Is it the life of the bond in?
Yeah. So the standard warranty is one year. And then of course there's warranty within the, you know, the, the products or the, the individual items that are specified. So the, the roof will have a, you know, a thirty-year warranty and mechanical units will have a X and X warranty. And you can even decide sometimes communities, we've had a recent community decide that on the. The plantings, the landscape plantings to pay a little bit extra and get a two-year warranty on the plantings. And so that's something you write into the specifications and you're not sure how much the contractor is marking up. Bid to meet that, but there's always that option.
So the project manager, do they stay involved? And then do a inspection before the one-year warranty is up and do a huge punch list on anything that they see?
Right. So we do a very detailed punch list at the end of the construction process. The MSBA hires a commissioning agent. So that's yet another party that is kind of independent, but involved with the project. They also are evaluating our documents during construction documents and providing input. Mostly it's on the mechanical systems, electrical systems. But also on the building envelope. So really looking at all the layers of insulation and. Making sure that, you know, the windows are tested one during the construction process. That commissioning agent comes back ten months after occupancy to again, see how things are going. Notify the, the town or the district if they need to ask the contractor to do any further work. So there is a, a check-in period after, after movement.
And councillors have any questions?
I'll send you all of mine.
Please do. The billing committee meetings are public. Please do come to the public meetings again in September and October. We have a project website. We have a project email address. We do our best to answer all of those emails that have come in. There have been some that have been incredibly detailed from local folks, which is great. Like very detailed questions on our proposed mechanical systems that I could not answer, but our mechanical engineer could. So all, all of that input is, is fantastic.
Anything? Matt, how's the pool? Okay.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the information.